Order, roll call please.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Chambers, here. Mr. Nguyen, Ms. Kemper, here. Ms. Wingo, here. Mr. Osborne, here. We have a call.
The first item is the approval of minutes of the business meeting, April 25th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Mr. Carroll and Ms. Wingo, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a proclamation, and I'm so glad that we have our fire and EMS crew here today for this. It is a proclamation for Firefighters Day, and it reads, "Whereas firefighting and emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas personnel from the City of Florence Fire EMS Department are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury; and whereas firefighters often put the safety and well-being of others above their own; and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers; and whereas the members of the firefighting and emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of the City of Florence Fire EMS Department by designating Emergency Medical Services Week and Firefighters Day. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Julie Abashon, Mayor of the City of Florence, and on behalf of the members of the Florence City Council, do hereby proclaim May 4th as Firefighters Day and the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and further extend appreciation to our members of our City of Florence Fire EMS Department." In chief, Rand, I'd like to present this again a photo op. Can we do that?
And if we could have you guys come up right here too.
Next we'll have an oath of office for firefighter EMT Brayden Collins. Chief, could you introduce our newest firefighter?
Thank you, Mayor Abashon, members of council. Brayden, if you care, would you step up front here, sir, we can get a look at you? All right, Brayden was born and raised in the City of Florence, graduated from Covington Catholic High School, and after a well-decorated football and wrestling career. During his time in athletics, he realized he enjoyed the brotherhood aspect and saw firefighting as an extension of that brotherhood. Additionally, the fire service inspired Brayden because of the thought of helping and impacting others and being a part of something bigger than himself. After graduating high school, Brayden obtained his EMT basic license and attended Gray Oaks Fire Academy. Graduating in December of 2022, Brayden has worked part-time at Crescent Springs Villa Hills Fire Department and came highly recommended by numerous people throughout Northern Kentucky. Chief Crowe has been a longtime family friend of Brayden, and we're trying our best not to hold that against him. Brayden, welcome to the board. I love it.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth, that you faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of firefighter EMT for the City of Florence according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying the challenge or assisted any person thus defending the law? Congratulations. Thank you.
Brayden, congratulations and welcome to the City of Florence. If your mom or dad would love to be here for a second?
Have a good one. And Brayden, did you want to introduce your family that was here today?
Yes, ma'am. So I have my mom, Misty Collins, and then my dad, Scott Collins.
Thank you all for sharing him with us. Next item in this ordinance, oh eight twenty-three, it's a second reading. It's an ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky, adopting an approving of water service rules and regulations relating to use, operation, extension, improvement of Florence, Kentucky water service system. The effect of this ordinance is to adopt water service rules and regulations relating to the use, operation, extension, improvement of the Florence, Kentucky water service system. The full text of ordinance oh eight twenty-two three, including its exhibits, is available for examination during regular office hours in the Office of the City Clerk, City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Mr. Osborne, Mr. Nguyen, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if I could, we're getting ready to approve several second readings of ordinances, and I want people to know that we've already discussed this in great detail before we get into the second reading, so we won't have a whole lot of discussion on most of these items.
This was discussed at caucus, and then we did a first reading, and so this is the second reading. Next item is ordinance oh nine twenty-two three, it's a second reading also. It's updating ordinance number oh forty-eight-five to identify and create non-elected offices of the City of Florence, Kentucky to include city clerk, city administrator, city coordinator, fire EMS chief, and chief of police. These non-elected city offices are hereby established and created pursuant to KRS eighty-three A point oh eight oh and other applicable law. The ordinance updates ordinance number oh forty-eight eighty-five relating to the identification and creation of non-elected offices in the City of Florence, Kentucky. Is there a motion? Ms. Wingo? Second, Ms. Kemper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is another second reading, ordinance oh ten twenty-three, and ordinance updating ordinance number oh nine twenty to remove council chambers as the location for our holding official regular meetings and informal informational meetings of the city council. This ordinance updates ordinance number oh nine twenty that amended prior ordinance number oh twenty nineteen of the City of Florence, Kentucky relating to the location for holding office, official regular meetings, as well as informational meetings of the city council. Is there a motion? Mr. Nguyen? Mr. Carroll, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, another second reading, number ordinance oh eleven twenty-two three, an ordinance relating to the repeal of ordinance number oh three hundred sixty-seven providing for the establishment, management, control, and operation of a park and recreation committee for the City of Florence, Kentucky. This ordinance repeals ordinance number oh three hundred sixty-seven that established management and control of the operations of a park and recreation commission for the City of Florence, Kentucky. Do I have a motion? Mr. Carroll? Ms. Wingo, any discussion?
I just want to reiterate one more time that I see the point for not having a commission, but I would like to revisit the opportunity for a committee.
Any other discussion?
I want to say that instead of hiring consultants to come in and tell us what to do with our parks and recs, redoing this board seems like a much better plan and a better plan for the taxpayers' dollars.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
No.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
May I motion to pass this for two?
Thank you. Second reading of ordinance oh twelve twenty-two three, an ordinance relating to the repeal of ordinance number oh one eighty and ordinance number oh five eighty-one that amended ordinance number oh one eighty. These ordinance is being repealed here and relating to the Kentucky Model Procurement Code. This ordinance repeals ordinance number oh one eighty and ordinance number oh five eighty-one that amended ordinance number oh one eighty of the City of Florence, Kentucky relating to the Kentucky Model Procurement Code. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Mr. Carroll? Mr. Nguyen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I think this is our final second reading. Twenty thirteen twenty-two three, an ordinance relating to the purchase and procurement procedures to make a contract, lease, or other agreement for the procurement of materials, supplies, equipment, or contractual services other than exempt professional statutorially authorized services pursuant to KRS four-two-four dot two-six-zero by the City of Florence, Kentucky. This ordinance relates to the purchase, procedures, and procurement to make a contract or other agreement for material, supplies, equipment, and contractual services pursuant to KRS four-two-four point two-six-zero. Is there a motion? Ms. Wingo? Ms. Kemper? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next is discussion and possible action. It's ordinance number oh fourteen twenty-two three, and I could call on Mr. Hunt regarding a planning and zoning matter.
Sometime in the late nineteen thirties, it was a single-family house. At some point, it was converted from a single-family house to a commercial property with a county firm operating it out there for quite a few years. So the request is to change the zoning from C to suburban residential two. It was recommended for approval with the Boone County Plan Commission with the condition that this garage right here, they put a garage order. So the P and D committee met, and they only two conditions. They recommended that the commercial sign up front here is removed and that the yellow stripes in the parking lot. Do I have to answer any questions?
Mr. Nguyen, do you have anything? You want to add? Ms. Wingo? Anyone else have any questions?
The intent of this property have it to be a short-term rental?
At this time, it'll be a rental. In order to be a short-term rental, it will have to be a conditional use through the VLA, so it can't go through the public hearing process and then go through the VLA as a condition used to a SR two.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to place this item on the agenda?
Senator?
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
What? So does that mean yes about their plan?
So their plan is to rent the house as a single-family home.
All right.
They wanted to make it a short-term rental. This process does not approve that.
Right.
Go back through the VLA as a condition.
It's just going to be one family, it's not really divided up.
I do not have a plan to rent it, but it's a single-family house, shared kitchen. I haven't seen any kind of something like that.
Right. Thank you.
I think we had a motion. Was there a motion?
I'm making a close.
Ms. Wingo, and second by David, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's to put it on the agenda. And then this is an ordinance oh fourteen twenty-two three, an ordinance adopting and approving a zoning map amendment for commercial two suburban residential two SR two for the approximate zero point four eight acre site located at seventy-three oh nine Dixie Highway, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the existing building to be used as a single-family home for rental. This is Bankland Real Estate Holdings LLC. This ordinance adopts and approves a zoning map amendment for commercial two suburban residential two for an approximate zero point four eight acre site located at seventy-three oh nine Dixie Highway to allow an existing building to be used as a single-family home for rental. The full text of ordinance oh fourteen twenty-two three, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, in the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Do I have a motion? Ms. Wingo? Mr. Nguyen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and possible action of a municipal order. And it is municipal oh seven twenty-two three. It's a municipal order approving appointment of Carol Reinhardt to Boone County Board of Assessment Appeals for a three-year term, where you received a memo in your packet with regard to Ms. Reinhardt's information, and we are privileged enough that Ms. Reinhardt joined us tonight. If you could stand up, Carol. If anyone has any questions, she can come to the podium. Otherwise, I just wanted to make sure everybody had met her. She's a great representative of her HOA, homeowners association, their plantation point, as well as experience in property management. Any questions?
Are we voting on this today?
Yes.
It's on the agenda, correct? Oh, we can, I guess, make a motion to put it on the agenda. Entertain a motion to put it on the agenda. Mr. Carroll? Ms. Wingo? Any discussion? All in favor?
All aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then next would be the municipal ordinance. Do I have to read just this? Municipal order MO seven twenty-two three, municipal order approving the appointment of Carol Reinhardt to Boone County Board of Assessment Appeals for a three-year term. Do I have a motion? Mr. Nguyen? Ms. Wingo, any discussion?
So we're voting on that?
Yes.
I thought we don't take action at these meetings.
Discussion and possible action is on the agenda. Special meeting. Special meetings. So you can only cover what's on the agenda? We've been voting all night. We've taken action all night.
Right, but it's an action of this stuff on the agenda for the final meeting.
No, we just voted on the action of putting it on the agenda, and now we're voting on the actual motion.
Can she come up and tell us a little bit about herself?
Sure.
And if it qualifies her to do this?
Carol, come on up here. You did receive information in your packet regarding her resume.
Yeah, I worked in property management for eighteen years. Heinz Interest Limited Partnership is a, we were worldwide, still are. All of our properties are Class A. I worked in the office. I said it was two high-rise office buildings downtown, which I stated in my little cover letter there. I ran the office, I was office manager. I did a lot. I worked with taxes, I worked with tenants, great customer service. As I say, I'm on the Board of Directors for my HOA, Point Preston. I served on the Board of Directors for a small threshold shop where I volunteer three days a week. I worked a lot with the taxes for our building. Of course, this was Ohio, the city of Cincinnati, not Northern Kentucky. So I'm, you know, I'm not unfamiliar with how those kind of things work. Other than that, I really don't. As I can tell you, I've been a resident here for sixteen years. Lived in the Union for twenty-five. I was married, my husband passed away last year. I have two sons, one currently serving in the Army, just made major. I will get to see him pinned on Friday. My other son is a DHL IT manager, one of those geeks.
Thank you for coming, Carol, and sharing your experience.
This is Reinhardt. We want to share with you how much we appreciate you volunteering to do this job. Sometimes it can be a little bit of a thankless job. At the same time, it's a job that's very much needed, and we appreciate your contribution. We'll respect all of you. Thank you very much.
Well, I can learn. I think I'm an intelligent person, so I can learn how to do this.
You have a nice group of people for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm sure that I can be led in the correct direction, and I'm willing to do that. Like I said, I have a best of interest in my community. I've been here a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and possible action for municipal order MO eight twenty-two three. And this is a municipal order authorizing the mayor to enter inter-local consortium agreement pursuant to KRS sixty-five point two-one-oh. Josh, would you like to explain?
Sure. So we discussed this a little bit in the budget retreat. This is a homebuyer assistance program that is funded by the federal Community Development Lock Grant. The city has never had access to this money because we weren't a part of this group. Simply put, joining this program will allow low-income Florence residents an opportunity to receive forgivable loan down payments of up to $10,000 for the purchase of a home. All applicants have to go through homeownership counseling program prior to closing on the loan. The borrower's debt cannot be over income ratio of thirty-one percent. Interest rates cannot be higher than two point five percent above the thirty-year conventional home interest rate. No loan payments, adjustable rates, anything like that. And this loan is forgiven after ten years. So they actually don't pay on it. What happens is if they live in the house for ten years and it's forgiven. They sell the house on like year five, and then that proceeds pays off. When they sell the house, it goes to pay back the consortium. So we're joining this group with Covington, Earlanger, Bellevue, quite a few other cities. Like I said before, the city has never had access to these funds. All of them can access them is by joining the Memorial Kentucky Home Consortium. Any questions? Have to answer.
Do we have a motion to put this on the agenda? Mr. Carroll? Mr. Nguyen? Any discussion?
I would make a comment that I'm familiar with this program because I know people taking advantage of it. It's really giving them a stake up in society. So we're moving forward. Each time we have someone in this particular program that gets into it, that's one less rental house that we have in the city. And any time a person owns a house, they automatically have a stake in society. So I think that's a good thing.
Okay, so this is the motion to place this on the agenda. Any other further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So next is municipal order MO eight twenty-two three, municipal order authorizing the mayor to enter into an inter-local consortium agreement pursuant to KRS sixty-five point two-one-oh ET SEQ with the cities of Bellevue, Covington, Earlanger, Ludlow, and Newport to join a consortium that is eligible to receive funding as a participating jurisdiction for the home, H O M E, program. Do I have a motion? Ms. Wingo? Mr. Carroll, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the mayor's report. Beginning this Saturday, May sixth, I know it's Derby Day, but we're going to start early in that day. We're going to post the nine eleven Never Forget Mobile Exhibit at the Florence Government Center. The exhibit will feature artifacts from the World Trade Center and guided tours from the New York Fire Department firefighters who responded to Ground Zero on September eleventh. The nine eleven Never Forget Mobile Exhibit will be open daily, May sixth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, from twelve PM to six PM. There will be an opening ceremony on Saturday at eleven AM, and all are welcome to attend. Baywak Community Rehabilitation Center will host their fiftieth anniversary celebration with the ribbon cutting on Wednesday, May seventeenth, at two PM. The event will be held at their location, seventy-nine Seventy Kentucky Drive in Florence. Baywak stands for Boone Adult Work Activities Center. It's been around, as we said, fifty years. And what they do is they provide workshop-type environment for adults with disabilities. They do fabulous work. Public Services Department Night Out will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-third, at the Florence Mall parking lot from four until six. And that's always a good time. There's big trucks and things you can blow the horns on, and they have a good time. Kids have a good time coming up there and treating you to dinner as well, so. We are still accepting applications for the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-ninth. The application deadline to participate in the parade is May fifteenth. Information is that the application to participate can be found on the city's website. Florence Aquatic Center will open May twenty-seventh. I know it doesn't feel like we'll be swimming on the twenty. It feels like we have a winter coat on still, but if we're going to open our pool on May twenty-seventh, then our hours of operation are eleven to seven. We do want to extend congratulations to Tom Towbert with the Fire EMS Department on his retirement from the city on April seventh. And then it's with a heavy heart to talk about our longtime city attorney, Hugh Skies. He's a pillar of the Florence community. He passed away peacefully yesterday, surrounded by loved ones. He was preceded in his death by his wife, Deanna Skies. I had the pleasure to know them both. Deanna was equally respected and a beloved member of the Florence community until her passing in January of twenty thirteen. Together, they are the namesakes of our Skies Activity Center on Highway forty-two. And I do want to read his obituary. Hugh Owen Skies, age eighty-three, of Florence, Kentucky, passed away peacefully in his home on May first, twenty twenty-three, surrounded by his loved ones. He was born in Cairo, Illinois, but lived all over the world as the son of an Army Colonel Hugh Shelby Skies. He graduated from the University of Louisville and Bryan-Dennis School of Law. When asked how to describe Hugh, the answer was different for everyone who met him, but all were better for having known him. From the courtroom to the golf course, to the fields with his beloved hunting dogs, he made lifelong friends and served those he loved with loyalty and generosity. He was a mentor for many and served the City of Florence for over fifty years, both as city attorney and family court judge. He was pivotal and ushering in an era of economic growth in which Florence would span decades. A scratch golfer and former forever sportsman, he loved Louisville Cardinals, horse racing, fishing, and hunting. He was an avid reader, especially of military history. A true Renaissance man whose presence embodied a dignified humility. He was preceded in death by his wife, Deanna Herbskies. He was preceded in death by his wife, Deanna Herbstskies of Florence, who passed away in 2013, and sister, Besta Skies Geddy of Norman, Oklahoma. He is survived by his niece, Ann Geddys, and her son, Grant Hall of Norman, Oklahoma. His godson, Patrick Osborne, his wife, Annie of Nashville, Tennessee, and his loving partner and best friend, Lisa Reeves of Florence. In lieu of flowers to honor his love of World War II and military planes, memorial donations can be made in Hugh Owen Skies honor to the tribute, Tri-State War Vet, made in Hugh Owen Skies honor to the Tri-State War Bird Museum. Donations can be made online at tswm.org or mailed to 4021 Borman Drive, Batavia, Ohio. Attention Denise Eldridge. The city is blessed to have worked with Mr. Skies in his capacity as city attorney. His knowledge, background, and history with our city has provided us with the kind of legal advice only he can provide. He can never be replaced, and we thank him for his many years of service.
Thank you.
There is no need for a closed session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Wingo? Mr. Wynn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is a special meeting. There is nothing else that can be covered except for what was covered on the agenda. So we are in adjournment.